Yeah.
Okay, I'll call to our special city council meeting workshop of August eighteenth. Second item on the agenda is discussion possible action concerning general fund, GPWA funds, and miscellaneous funds. Leroy, are you taking the lead on that?
I am going to make the initial presentation and I will give an overview.
Okay.
And then when we get to the individual departments, if there are specific questions, and of course, the department heads will take over. You ready to change the lights? Okay. This is the calendar that we have left. Of course, tonight is the workshop on the budget. Tentatively, we have a workshop scheduled again for next Tuesday if we need some additional work to get where we need to do to have a budget to adopt. Last year, because of miscommunications, it wasn't clear when we left the first workshop whether we needed another one. Then we got to the point to have the budget hearing and adopt it, and that become a big obstacle to get over. So tonight, I want to make sure, do we want to have the workshop when we get done on the twenty-fifth or not? Because I don't want it to bite me in the butt again this year like it almost did last year. We will publish the budget on the twenty-sixth. You can still make adjustments to the budget, even though there's a one published in that notice, you're not locked in. So even after that, you can make adjustments to it. September first, of course, is a city council and public works authority meeting. That's when we would have the public hearing on the budget to back up on the notice. The notice has to be at least five days before the budget hearing. And then adoption of the budget has to be fifteen days prior to the start of the budget year. And so hopefully, on September first, we'll be in a position to adopt it and then move forward from there. Our new fiscal year begins on October first. We're on the federal year where most cities are on the state budget year where they start on July first and June thirtieth. And then city clerk will file the budget documents with the state auditor by October This is kind of a repeat of our discussion at our retreat last Friday to show we've made great progress in our financial stability over the last few years. In two thousand seventeen, I became city manager about the middle of this budget year, but you started out with a three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars budget for beginning balance in two thousand seventeen. In the general fund, public works authority, seven hundred thousand. And then the stabilization funds, the one for the general fund, had about nine hundred and fifty thousand. And GPWA had about four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. If you advance at the end of this year, we're one month out, so we're projecting one month. But it appears that we will have a beginning balance for the current budget year of one point nine million. So we went from four hundred thousand beginning balance to almost two million dollars. We have done the same with the public works authority, from seven hundred thousand to almost two million dollars beginning balance. So our reserves, our unfunded balance, gives us some stability. On the stabilization funds and the general fund, we were close. I showed this, if you look at the treasurer's report, she just does cash, and you'll see that some places in the budget, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. But the two hundred and ten we loaned ourselves for the ambulance is just like buying a CD or note. When you add that in, we're at a million forty-two in the general fund. And in the public works authority, as we go through the budget, we are going to transfer from fund balance one hundred and twenty thousand into FY twenty-one budget to get to a million dollars when you add potential interest earned. So we went in general from two point five beginning balance in these critical departments, our funds, to almost six million. So we're in a lot more financial stable position than we were a few years ago. Did two at a time. Sales tax revenue, if you look at sales tax in sixteen, we did not the, we only got one month of the three-quarter percent in sixteen, so that kind of skews it. So I'm going to compare the three percent across the board. But you can look at in FY seventeen, when you compare just the three percent, it went up four percent from one year to the next. And then between seventeen and eighteen, it went up almost nine percent. And then, oops, in nineteen, it dropped almost seven percent. And now this year, even with COVID nineteen, we're back up from the prior year about eight percent. So we're very close to being ahead of eighteen, which was a good year, banner year for us. So you can see, you've got peaks and valleys in sales tax revenue, because it is very volatile based on the economy. And by having stability in balances in your funds, it allows you to shave the peak, to put money back, so that you can fill the valley in, so you don't have to have layoffs and furrows and cutbacks. And then in the budget that we're presenting to unite, the draft, we're projecting that it will go up three more percent next year. So we're projecting seven million dollars total, three percent that goes to the general fund, and three-quarters percent that goes to the CIP sales tax. The use tax. On the use tax, which has really been helped out by internet sales, cities didn't used to get sales tax from internet sales, now they do. In FY sixteen, our use tax was just a little under two hundred and sixty thousand. That's grown a lot over the last few years. We project this year eight hundred and eleven thousand. And so it'll be a twenty-six percent this year. Last year, it grew almost sixty percent. I updated my numbers to reflect, because when we, in our budget that you have before you, we only had ten months of numbers and projected the last two. Well, on my numbers, I have added the last month we got, so I'm only projecting one month. So mine is a little higher than what Kim had in the budget. But we are projecting use tax growing about six percent next year to eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Now that we have the eleventh month, we may be able to bump that up some. But clearly, Amazon, eBay, Wayfair, Chewy, those are big contributors to our use tax. And you can see the trend has been up. As we talked at our retreat on the three-quarters sales tax, if you look at the average of the first four years and use that to project forward, you would have roughly nineteen million dollars, nineteen and a half million dollars over the life of the use tax, I mean, the CIP tax, to spend on capital improvements. If you project going forward, it grows two percent, then you would have about twenty-two million. And then if you project three percent growth from here on out, it would, you would have about twenty-three million. Problem is, this money, even though this is a total, it doesn't come until years out in the future. So you can't spend it now unless you want to borrow it. And that becomes quite expensive. As an example, if you look at the interest on borrowing the three million that was borrowed when you refinanced the water treatment plant, and you added three million to kickstart the CIP, that interest over the life of that loan, six hundred thousand. So that three million cost you six hundred thousand. Big things, of course, is the wastewater treatment plant. City council has pledged or four million for the wastewater treatment plant out of CIP, and that will be matched with other existing revenue streams from the public works authority to fund the seventeen million dollar wastewater treatment plant, four point three for the industrial park. And then we have a million that has been encumbered for matching money for the land and water conservation fund. The application will submit this month for softball phase one. And so I've tried to put these in order of the amount, but we've already pledged or encumbered over eighteen million. So we're getting to the point that there's not a lot of new money going to be available. We're going to have to get more creative if we want to do additional projects over the next few years and look at federal and state grants as opportunities, maybe apply to some foundations, look at public-private partnerships, even get crazy and look at crowdfunding maybe for some projects. And then, as I talked about, you know, if you grow up on the farm, you learn how to rub two nickels together to make a quarter. And by that, that means that sometimes you can get a grant and you use workforce to do in-kind match rather than cash. Projected fund balances. In FY twenty twenty, the current budget year, our fund balances of all these funds was nine million, one hundred thousand. And you can see, here's the general fund, GPWA, the capital projects, and the two stabilization funds. And then the FY twenty-one estimated beginning balance would go up, because we spent less than we took in to nine point eight million. And then our projected revenue in these funds for FY twenty-one is a little over fifty-three million. And we plan to expend under this budget fifty-four million. So if we do that, our balance would go down some. And when we get to the general fund and the GPW operating fund, I will show where we're at as far as why we're projecting revenues to be less in expenditures, not significantly, but slightly. And then, of course, as we do capital projects, clearly, the balance of our CIP fund is going to fluctuate. In this budget, we have built in a four percent cost of living. And the primary numbers to look at, if you do a four percent cost of living across all departments in the city for everyone, that would cost you two hundred and seventy-six thousand additional dollars to fund that. If you just do the police department, the FOP members, it would be sixty-four thousand. And then if you just did the fire members that are represented by the IFA, International Association of Firefighters, it would be seventy thousand. So that's the cost that has been built into this draft budget, a four percent cost of living increase. Okay. This is the summary of the general fund, and I don't remember, I didn't put what sheet it was in the pack. But if you look at this, this column is the budget we adopted last year. This column is what we estimate will actually incur in revenue and expenditures this budget year. And this is what's proposed for FY twenty-one budget that you would be adopting this year. And I know that sheet is a little bit tall, and also I have printed out some of these for this purpose. Thank you, sir. I'll let you get to that sheet. If you look at this, you probably got a chance to get to this page on the handout. Page eight. One of the things is going to throw it up to explain from the start, if you look at the budget expenditures for the general fund is twelve million in the current budget. And our projected expenditures is four point six. But our revenue's up as well as our expenditures. But if you look at the projected expenditures of fifteen million for FY twenty-one, you would think that we're proposing in the general fund, we're going to spend three million more than we did last year. But it is just a change in our accounting procedures. If you look up here, general government is going from five billion to nine million. And the reason for that is, and I will, let's go to this sheet for a minute. If you go to the next page, transfers to the public works authority. When the city did their bond issue for water plant and other projects, they pledged the three percent sales tax as a credit enhancement on the bond issue to get a better interest rate. And so each year, we transfer our sales tax money that we get from the general fund to the public works authority. So it's there as, to meet that pledge. And then as the years go, as the months go by and we don't need it, we have adequate revenue in the public works authority, we transfer it back. So this amount is, it goes to the public works authority, then comes back. Well, in prior years, our accounting standards, we only moved a portion of it, one and a half percent.
One and three-quarter.
One and three-quarter. We need to move the whole three percent. And that's, that's the big change. So you can see, that transfer, this year, we're projecting it'll be a little over three point one billion. And when we do the full three percent, it's five point five. But that's a wash. It goes over to PWA and then comes back. But it shows up as an expenditure. And that's why, when you look at this budget, it looks like we're going from twelve million expenditures to fifteen. Well, we're just increasing the amount of money we're transferring to cover that pledge as a credit enhancement on our bonds. And then it comes back during the year back to the general fund. If you look at all the other departments, you can see what increase they are compared to last year's budget. But in the current budget year, we projected twelve million, five hundred thirty-four thousand in expenditures and revenue of twelve million, five hundred thirty-four. So there would be zero gain or loss. And our year-end balance would be one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and I'm rounding that off. Our actual projection for the budget year, because we get grants and other funds come in, we're projecting twelve million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand in expenditures and twelve million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand in revenue. So we would gain to our fund balance at the end of this year, three hundred and ten thousand. So our beginning balance would go for, was one point seven five, and our ending balance would be over two million. So again, we're adding to the reserves that we have in our stability. In the budget that we proposed to you, and we could have presented, we could have adjusted out this forty-six thousand dollars of expenditures where our expenditures are over revenue, but we didn't know what you all would want to do with the budget. So before we tried to refine it, we wanted to get your input. But this would be a modified budget, balanced budget. Our revenue, well, first, our expenditures in the draft budget is fifteen million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And our revenue, fifteen million, six hundred and ten. So in the budget that you were, that was in your packet, we would be projecting spending forty-six thousand dollars next year than we took in. But if you look at it, we're not really eating into the current balance. All we're, we would be doing the three hundred and ten revenue that we got in FY twenty, instead of all of that going to reserves or unfunded balance, it would be two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And in this budget, in both, in all of our budgets, they have personnel. We have funded all the stepping increases, four percent cost of living. And we got some good news, our current health insurance provider would be a zero percent increase. We had projected under fifteen percent, so that was good news. I'll go through all these, and then we can come back to that you have questions on. General fund transfers, I've explained this one, why it has went up, because the amount of our sales tax, and instead of doing part of it, we're moving all of it over to the public works authority. And then when we get to public works, you see it comes right back, so it's a wash. This one transferred to the Guthrie Economic Development Authority. That is in case we actually do the acquisitions of the asset at the airport. If they were to not make any revenue, and we bought all of the assets that we're looking at, half of the payment to retard that would be a hundred thousand dollars. So, of course, we're thinking those assets will generate revenue, but just to protect ourselves, we showed that we have the financial resources to set aside a hundred and five thousand dollars to back up that pledge. When we do the financial agreement with Edmund, we have the money in case those projects, those assets don't generate any revenue at all, we got the money to pay our half. The last one that I would point out, because motel tax is not as great as it was, and we're doing some things, we are moving some money from the general fund to the hotel motel tax fund. What's the purpose of that? So that we don't have to decrease what we do in tourism. Public Works Authority, again, you can see the transfers are up significantly. It's just the same thing. This is the backside of what we talked about, the general fund coming back. But total expenditures in the FY twenty budget, we showed expenditures of almost eight point five, revenue of eight point seven. So we would have gained two hundred and ten sixty thousand. Our expenditures would be that much less than our revenue. So our beginning and ending fund balance would grow. Our projection to end the year, again, we're projecting, when you look at revenue and expenses, our expenses is a hundred and sixty-one thousand less than revenue. So it's a balanced budget. You're actually adding revenue to your beginning or your unbudgeted fund balance. In the proposal that we have to you, we're proposing that we would spend ten thousand dollars more in FY twenty-one than the projected revenue. And again, what we would be doing is taking it from this hundred and sixty-one thousand to the good this year. We're not reducing this amount. We would take it from this, and instead of adding a hundred and sixty-one thousand this year, in effect, you'd be adding a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Again, this could be adjusted down, but we didn't want to make any adjustments to come to a balanced budget until we saw what you wanted to do with the budget. Again, on the sales tax going to the public works authority to meet our requirement for our enhanced credit enhancement for our bond issue, here's the money coming back to the general fund. So it goes to GPWA. This one, I would point out, the three hundred and fifty thousand in the wastewater treatment plant, over the last few years, we have been moving money into the fund for the wastewater treatment plant. And we have been moving money into the wastewater treatment plant fund each year from our CIP tax. And so this year, we will move three hundred and fifty thousand, and then we will continue to do that. We have the adequate funds in the wastewater treatment fund to pay the difference between the sixteen million we will borrow and the seventeen million dollars a project will cost. And this three fifty for the first couple of years will be used as part of the debt service. And then after that, we will use that three fifty for the additional operating costs we projected for the wastewater treatment plant. And then the last one, the hundred and twenty thousand, that's just transferred to, from our fund balance to the stabilization fund to get it to a million dollars. So we're where we pledged to be when that fund was set up. With that, that's kind of an overview of the budget. And before we get into the weeds or the details, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the council?
The only question I had had to do with the swimming pool. I don't remember what page that was on. You may comment about the money for the swimming pool, municipal pool, I think it was referred to. And I was trying to figure out why we were doing that. Eight? Thank you. Yeah, it says municipal pool, twenty thousand dollars estimated for twenty-one. What are we planning on doing on that? That's my only question.
The general fund, that's the money we use to operate the pool.
That's just going up.
That's just going up, I think.
Like chemicals?
Chemicals, painting it, the money that we pay the YMCA to operate it for us. That's just the, that's the typical budget we have to operate the pool. And we budgeted a little more this year than last year because we think there will be more repairs before we open.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Leroy, thank you, very good.
When can we get off in the weeds?
Now into the weeds, we go.
The youth department, so as you look at different departments, you'll have the department head come up to address questions.
That's part everybody likes.
Okay, so Kim, are you gonna lead that off or is each department just gonna get up and go?
How about if we just do the order of the questions, which department do you want to do first?
Believe it or not, I don't have a department.
Okay.
But scrolling through some of this, I don't know, you're gonna call me in on cratchit. But what gets me?
Never use that name, I have better ones.
Okay, but can we say them here?
Probably not.
Okay. We'll look, we'll go down through here and say, well, in twenty, we budgeted twenty thousand. And this is no particular department, but we budgeted them twenty thousand. Up to date, we've needed four thousand of that money. But our twenty estimate is still twenty thousand. So to me, that says we're still gonna blow that twenty thousand to be sure that we spend it and we want twenty-five for twenty-one. That's a lot of twenties, but.
So, so in general, you pointed out that this year we budgeted twenty, but we've only spent four thousand. Well, we haven't blown that twenty or it would say twenty thousand.
Well, but is, when they're still estimating twenty, that they're gonna, they're gonna spend that twenty in the next call?
And the reason we do that is when we get close to the end of the year, we've tried to move in a direction where we buy equipment out of the general fund for our operations rather than out of CIP. So what we do is we go and capture that excess money and then we come to you to buy equipment. And so it has to be shown as an expense or the, or the revenue wouldn't be there. And so some of that is will be, will do a sweep and say like Tenny in his department, Public Works and Streets. If he has vacant positions and money he doesn't spend, then we may come to you and the, the eight things that he presented to you as his priorities, we may pick some of those and propose that we fund those out of the leftovers from this year's budget. And then the second thing we have to do, some of our, and without going each line item, some of our funds expenditures don't happen over the year. Some of them happen at the end of the year, some of them happen at the beginning. And then the last thing is there are times that we need excess in the budget because we never know what's gonna happen next if we have a flood. We have a lot of expenditures right away that we have to cover while we're waiting for FEMA reimbursement. If we have a major incident where we have to have police and fire out, we've got to have some working room in our budget to cover those.
Well, and I figured some of them were like the sorter they were talking about the other day. They wanted to do it out of that category maybe, but they wanted to wait till about the end of the year to make sure they made it okay. And then at the end of the year, they're, they're gonna go ahead and buy it. And, and I understand that, but it, when you look down through here on some of these, it says, you gave us twenty, we've only spent two grand, but we're gonna spend twenty and we want forty next year.
And that's the purpose of that, we're trying to reserve that money. We'll do a sweep at the end of the year and if that money is truly left over, rather than bring equipment to you to come out of CIP where you want to do capital improvements, that will give us an opportunity to fund some of that equipment out of general fund and out of the public works budgets.
So you want me to go on?
Yes, but I hope I don't have to answer all of them.
I don't care who answers. What's happening in communications that it's going up twenty-one percent?
I'll let Don address that one.
One of the problems that we've had over, at least before I got here, is we spend money out of funds that we don't, we don't use it for. We buy a gun and it gets bought out of communications or we buy a car and it gets bought out of jail. And what we've done over the years, the last three years, is try to consolidate these funds and spend where it comes out of. So even if we go to communications and we're gonna spend a little bit over there with city manager's approval, obviously, that's where, again, some of this money would, would come in. As we've consolidated all this stuff, it's, it's a choice where we put it in a specific account. So some of the things that we've never spent out of communications before, we moved it from one place and put it in another. You'll see overall that the police department budget stays essentially the same with the exception of salaries that increase over the years. But overall, I think there's not a whole lot of, there's not a whole lot of extra being asked for. We're just trying to realign. So truly, when you come to me and say, how much are we spending out of communications? Hopefully, it is the absolute most honest, complete answer that I can give you. Instead of where we've come from over the past few years is we spend money in communications that we brought out of patrol or out of administration.
Does it allow you to account for it better as well, true?
Well, and ideally, it allows us to budget better in the future because you don't forget that, hey, we bought this software program that only applies to communications out of patrol because that's the only place we had money. And that's what, what they don't understand is, is.
But doesn't that kind of turn communications into a big slush fund?
Not really, I mean, it's, it's stuff we already bought, but instead of buying it out of communications, we're pulling that and sticking it into communications.
So, so if you look at communications, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, I'm just trying to understand it here. So if you buy a new machine gun and we bill it to communications because we have a bigger communications budget, there's no way, that shouldn't go under firearms?
Yes.
Yes, it should.
But what, what has happened over the last few years? Because in the police department, they've had different people coding their expenditures and it wasn't intentional to take it out of the wrong account. It's just, it was an error. And so they have streamlined that MPD now and there's fewer people coding it when we make expenses to make sure it gets in the right department going forward. But there were some errors in the past. But if you look at the communications budget.
I think the, the biggest increase is your salaries.
Yep, it is.
Everything else is pretty much the same.
Salaries went from one seventy-five to two thirty, communications.
That's probably because you've been down, you're planning on finishing the year within about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but you've been down dispatchers.
Yes, well, I mean, we, we, this year, we're budgeted for seven dispatcher, we have four. Next year, we're gonna be budgeted for seven again and hopefully, hopefully we get to seven.
Yeah. But really, your increase is, is in personnel costs.
Which would be the four percent increase for COLA and then the step increases would be a substantial part of that. We're not adding any additional dispatchers.
And, and I mean, and that's it, if you look across my funds, the, the, the biggest, the biggest increases are always in salary and benefits. And there, we, I tried really hard this year to maintain the same level, non-salary wise, that we had last year because, you know, COVID and everything else and, and things are, you know, we need to be careful for the future. So there's not, there's not much of an increase on top of salary and benefits.
And I don't even have your sheet pulled up, I'm just looking at this, the overview. I'm gonna ask the same question about fleet maintenance, you know, it's up nineteen percent. What's, you always look at the big numbers and wanna know why.
Nineteen percent, I, I don't.
You're not, I mean, that's for fleet maintenance, I mean.
Yes, no, that's exactly, you're not looking at a one or two percent increase, you're looking at what's ten and fifteen and twenty, I understand.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I say, if you look across my budget as in total, the number didn't go up however much communications went up. The, the number, if you pull salary and benefits out, the number is relatively the same as it was last year. We're just, we're spending and we're, we're trying to make sure we spend out of the right category so it can be tracked more efficiently and, and the budgeting process is more efficient and accurate across the years.
When will that, when will that finish? When will you be in a position?
I, I think we've got most of it done this year, but I guarantee you, there'll be one or two things that pop up next year.
One or two is not bad.
No, no.
Ten or twelve, it might be a little bit more.
Yes, absolutely.
A question on your professional services and police administration. You had sixty-eight thousand last year or I guess anticipated this year and it went to zero. Is that something that, is that a contract that you guys have had?
I don't remember that.
McAfee.
What is it?
McAfee.
McAfee.
McAfee, McAfee.
That's, again, like, like the city manager said, you know, sometimes we have some extra money left over in case we have an emergency. And this last year, we had not an emergency, but an.
That was our arbitration.
Yes, an unexpected. So instead of going back to the general fund and trying to pull it out of whatever we have left over, I had the money left over.
I understand, that's all I need.
I'd love if you put that sixty-eight thousand back in, I'm sure I could find a way to.
I'd love to.
But no.
We don't wanna have another arbitration.
No, well, if you do, you want one, you win.
And part of the, part of the money that we took was from communications and so that, that budget went down, which is, so the, the true numbers are what we.
Because we're, we're budgeted for seven communications officers, we've had four. So that was a good place to pull a chunk of that money. Also, because we've been down personnel, that's where we managed to pay for the, the vehicle stuff that you all approved, that said it can come out of the budget, but it couldn't come out of CIP. So we, we made that happen too.
Yeah.
Okay.
And to answer your, the fleet, we took some money from the fleet budget because they were down one, one position, I think, the whole year. So we were able to take money from the fleet and reduce that budget and help buy that patch truck.
So it's going, why is it going back up now?
Well, we hope to fill that.
You putting that spot back?
Uh huh, we hope to fill that position, yeah.
Is that why Streets was down?
Same with Streets.
Six percent?
Mm-hmm.
So on HR, and I know this is just a general question, does it have nothing to do with police or anything else? I don't really need HR up there, but I noticed there's like twenty-eight thousand of vacation buyback. Is that for the whole company here? Because that's what I.
You're allowed, everybody's allowed to sell one week of vacation.
Okay, but that's for all staff?
Correct.
Okay, that was my only question there.
Just Kristen.
Well, that's why I was wondering, how did you get so much vacation built up?
You got a lot of, you got a lot of vacation for a newbie.
That's, that's citywide.
That's what I thought.
That's thirty minutes of Leroy's time and they bought.
Actually, Don, I did have another question on yours, the crime inventory, the evidence, evidence. Can't read, can't read my own writing here, but we're going up to twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand.
So one of the goals that, that the council and the city manager have for me is to make sure our evidence room is where it needs to be. So we, we got it all audited. Last year, we bought a shelf that expanded the, the space by a third, basically.
Mentioned it.
And this year, we've got, we've got evidence cabinets that you can access them from outside, drop your evidence and it goes inside the evidence room. So it's, so only the evidence room guys has access to. The ones we currently have are made out of wood, they're old and falling apart. And so we, we're asking to put a brand new one in there, a metal one that, that complies with the standards that's expected today.
And you're buying it out of this budget?
Yes.
Now, see, I figured that one out and didn't even ask.
So chief, did your thirty thousand dollar budget on safety and apparel, was that enough? I mean, did that, what did you get with that? I mean, what, what is that really gonna buy? Couple of vests?
Well, no, we actually do pretty good on vests because we, we have a grant that pays for fifty percent of our vests. So we're only paying half on those. But that's, you know.
Are you finding yourself short at the, you know, at the beginning of the budget year with thirty grand there? Are you long at the end of the year?
Not, not really, again, it's one of those things where, you know, this year, we might be a little bit long in there. And let's, let's say we're five thousand dollars long, but we're four thousand dollars short in communications or in the jail or something like that. So again, it, it all tends to even out. Usually, we're a little bit short in there. But again, when, when we formulated the budget this year, we really, because, because of all the uncertainty, we wanted to make sure it was as close to last year's budget as, as we could get. And one way or the other, we'll find a way to make do, barring some mega emergency.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you guys have enough safety supplies and apparel, that's pretty critical.
We think it is, we think it is.
All right.
Okay, good, any other questions of chief while he's here? All right, other general questions?
So how is the four-day work week working out? Let's talk about that a minute.
Four-day work?
I mean, are you finding that, I mean, on the overtime side, it, it doesn't look like there's that much overtime going on here? There was in nineteen, but in twenty, there's not really much, it doesn't look like.
It, it depends, we, it's a really fine line to walk, right? Ideally, we want no overtime, we wanna send guys home with that crew overtime, but.
But it's a four-day work week, ten-hour shifts, right?
No, no, that's incorrect. It is a, it is a seven-day, they work seven days every two weeks. They work four days this week and three days the next.
Okay. So four, four ten-hour shifts?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve.
Okay.
So they, they work eighty-four hours in a two-week pay period and.
So are they liking that, is that helping keep turnover from happening?
I think, I think at this point, you, it's mixed, you're gonna find guys that say, man, we wish we had tens. And tens are the ideal shift, but tens require more people because the day doesn't divide up evenly. So twelves, there's some inherent dangers with twelves because the studies show that the last two hours tend to get really dangerous because the, the police officer's mind tends to wander and they get tired. So the way we have it set up, ideally, when we're, when we're even at a majority of the staff, we stagger the times they come in, so they might come in at six, seven and eight. So technically, what they do is they work ten hours on the street.
And two in the house.
Then they come back in for two hours to get all their paperwork done, so it cuts down on overtime.
Yeah, keeps them out of the street too at that last.
Right, and, you know, essentially, they work fourteen days a month, they're off fourteen days a month, it gives them more time. If they wanna seek a second job, they still can do that and have time available to spend with their families.
Yeah, okay, that is it for me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric, question on the EMT contract, EMS?
Yes, sir.
So you're projecting about a hundred thousand dollar increase?
Well, there's a little bit of technicality to that. We have the new EMS district that got voted in that will finally start collecting funds this year. So that basically provides for that increase.
Okay.
Money we aren't getting currently for that area, but we will this next fiscal year.
That's good news, that's good news.
And we should have a contract, you guys, probably the next three meetings for consideration on that.
Okay, all right, anything else on the fire?
Maybe.
Departments?
Not right now.
Okay. Other questions on budget? About to wrap it up, if you don't have any. Guess we don't need a second meeting.
Well, let's make sure, because it bit me in the butt last year and let's make sure we don't need one. I don't wanna get to September one and.
Well, like last year, they, I think everybody's aware that this can go, we can re-modify.
Correct.
If we need to.
Yeah, we can, we can, it's a living document and if we get three months in, six months, it's just like the first year I was here when we found out the budget wasn't gonna work and we did a mid-year. when we found out the budget wasn't gonna work, and we did a mid-year budget adjustment. We can do that anytime we need to.
Okay.
So we're good till September one, when we have the public hearing?
I think so. James, anything?
I'm good.
No, Cheryl? No? Jim?
So I'll, if I make that adjustment on the user fee, it'll bring our, instead of forty-six thousand, we'll, we'll still be under about eleven thousand.
Okay, that's a pretty good picture, that's a pretty good picture considering.
When you look at what other communities are going through right now with COVID-19 and lost revenue and employees being furloughed or reducing staff, we've been able to maintain a sense of stability that we think that we will be able to continue. And the nice thing about it is if we do have a hiccup, we have built our reserves up so that we can work through that.
All right, well, good news, great job by the team and the leadership.
Hey, let me ask another quick question on the pool, and the only reason I ask is as part of this budget. We haven't decided, I guess that's gonna be a whole meeting in itself at some point.
On the swimming pool, what we budgeted is to do the repairs and open it in FY twenty-one. After our workshop, we will, now that we got some of our flood projects over with, we'll try to set aside time where we bring to you options on the pool and what those cost, so that you can make an informed decision. You know, do you build a new pool, do you put a new liner in the old one? We'll try to come up with some options during this year that could potentially be for FY twenty-two action. All we plan to do this year is make the necessary repairs to reopen it for one more year while we get you those options.
That's for me.
Okay, all right, again, great job by the team and the leadership. That being the last item on this agenda, and without wanting to bite anybody in the butt, we're adjourned.